Down went the gunner, a bullet was his fate.
Amen.
Down went the gunner and then the gunner's mate.
Amen.
Up jumped the sky pilot, gave the boys a look, and manned the gun himself as he laid aside the book, shouting, "Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition." Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition. Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition and we'll all stay free.
Hallelujah, Gunner.
Praise the Lord and swing into position. Can't afford to sit around wishing. Praise the Lord, we're all between position and the deep blue sea. Yes, the sky pilot said it. You gotta give him credit for a son of a gunna, a gunna was he. Shout, "Praise the Lord, we're on a mighty mission. All aboard, we're not a goldfish. Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition and we'll all stay free."
Pass the ammunition and we'll all stay free.
Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition.
Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition. Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition and we'll all stay free.
Hallelujah, brother.
Praise the Lord.
Swing into position.
Amen.
Can't sit around wishing.
Praise the Lord.
We're all between position and the deep blue sea. Yes, the sky pilot said it. Gotta give him credit for a gunna, a gunna, a gunna was he. Shout, "Praise the Lord, we're on a mighty mission. All aboard, we're not a goldfish. Praise the Lord and pass the ammunition and we'll all stay free."
We're gonna call the meeting to order. First item is invocation. Is Pastor Ellsworth here? We'll hold that and start with the pledge of allegiance. And that'll be led by Jody Rooney.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor isn't here. Okay, next is a roll call.
Mayor Harvey Skug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mary Mallory.
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney.
Here.
Councilmember Michael Whiting.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the proclamation. Parks and Recreation Month. I take it you have to read it there, don't you, Adamah?
This was handed off to me by chance. And I would imagine that Jason probably needs to come up here. Along with Parks and Rec commissioners. Okay, the proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the town of Prescott Valley, and whereas our parks and rec are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas, Parks and Rec programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas, parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the benefit derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Harvey C. Skug, mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and call upon parks and recreation supporters to join us in recognizing the importance of our nation's parks and recreation facilities, and encourage all citizens to enjoy all the recreation activities available in their community.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Right now, when I look around me at all the brown and the tan and the black where it's burned, I'm so happy to drive by our parks and see some green. That reminds me that we will be green again. The other thing, there was a long litany of things, but I think it's really important that the parks help us have the clean air that we have. A lot of people don't know the part that the trees and their shrubs play in our clean air. But if you think I'm making it up, go online and look it up.
Elaine.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to tell you that I am grateful that you have made this proclamation for the Parks and Recreation Commission. The town has many commissions and boards, and this is one unique one that brings an awful lot of joy to your constituents. Whether they want to take a snooze under a tree on the grass or watch a sports game or participate in sports, take guitar lessons, or whatever else that might interest them, we are providing it. And I'm grateful that we have your support and would ask that you squeeze the budget a little tighter for us. Every cent more always goes to something worthwhile. So thank you for the proclamation on behalf of the commissioners.
Kevin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I did all what Elaine said, and I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission for the last few years. And I just want to give a shout out to Brian Whitty and his staff for the outstanding and dedicated work that they do. And thank all of you again for, you know, helping us out and giving us what we need to make the parks a beautiful place for families and their children. Thank you.
I would just like to take Elaine's comments of squeezing the budget a little bit more.
I know it.
We appreciate what you give us. Thank you.
You know, Mayor, I'd like to take the opportunity to say thank you to Jason because he's been so great on helping with all the flag projects and everything that we do. And for the commission on the board and everything and just all the great things that you guys work together so well, it's just a blessing to all of us that we build from that. And you can go out and see all the great things that have been built from that unity of working together.
Yeah, I just want to concur. I think it's an understatement to say that Parks and Recreation makes a mark on our community. It does. And it's hard to believe all the services that come out of Park and Recreation. And was just talking about this this afternoon, and it's either at a low cost or usually no cost, which I think our residents really appreciate. And obviously, that's something I feel we ought to continue in terms of services to our community. So thank you and congratulations.
I appreciate our commissioners. And also, Jason, I remember one of the events I went to at Arbor Day that you were there. You were rocking it. Thank you very much. And it does, it brings community together because we have these different venues within the town to be able to have. And especially love the new Bob Edwards Park. It's one of my favorites. Yeah, and I love it when we have art in the park as well. So keep up the good work, as Mayor says. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to ask Jason to go ahead and take this opportunity to talk about a movie that he's got coming up here in the next couple of days. And also, I think next Wednesday evening, you have an event. And I don't know what that is. Could you help me with that, Jason?
Thanks, Larry. I really appreciate you giving me this opportunity. This Saturday night, we will be showing Only the Brave here at the Civic Center. It's going to be taking place just about dark. Usually, it's about 7:45. We try and get the movie started. There are flags out currently in the common area between the police department and the Civic Center, representing the nineteen Granite Mountain hotshots that did lose their lives five years ago tomorrow. We don't know how big the crowd will be. We will have some vendors on hand that'll be serving food and drink that you can purchase for a nominal fee. And you can come out here to the Civic Center grounds and enjoy the movie. Also, we will be having fireworks, if you haven't heard that already. Next Wednesday night, about dark thirty, we'll launch the fireworks. It'll be at Mountain Valley Park. We have been placing a lot of time and effort into being firewise, as we do every year. We have twenty-two years of experience in doing fireworks. We're very good at it. We know what to do. We work very closely with our local fire jurisdictions to make sure that we are doing everything possible to put the safety of the community first. And we also serve our community very well in offering a huge event that is not just the people in the park can take advantage of, but any in the surrounding area can also enjoy. So that'll be Wednesday night. Festivities start about 2:00 p.m. Hero Party Rentals will be at the Fourplex Fields from, I believe, 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. doing jumpies and water play. We'll have some bands there that afternoon. We'll have several food vendors in the park. And we'll have all of our Parks and Recreation and public works staff there to assist our law enforcement and fire department in protecting and keeping safe our citizens and our community.
Do you have a comment, Marty?
Yeah, about the proclamation and the importance of our parks. Every time I drive around and I pass by a park, they're always being used in many different ways. I mean, you'll see people out there just doing some exercises. You'll see the kids playing. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, parks are the heartbeat of the community. And without parks, the kids really have nowhere to go and nowhere to play unless you enjoy having them play in the middle of the street with cars coming down the road. So we're fortunate, we have, what, twenty-nine cars? Twenty-nine parks? At the present time? So, you know, that's great. Look, growing up in New York City, we played in the street. So I know what that's about. So, but to have the, not only the quantity of parks that we have, but the quality of the parks that we have here and all the activities that go with it. I mean, Mountain Valley Park is constantly getting accolades from all over the state and other states regarding how well it is and the fields, the shape that they're in, and just the amount of activities that take place there. So keep up the good work, and we'll have probably another proclamation next year. Who knows?
Rick? Well, I personally believe that an area without parks is simply a bedroom community, but are a bedroom area, if you will. But a community is built when you do have parks. And I feel that we do have a great community here. And it's because of the work that's done by the staff and by the commission. And that's been true for years. And you've done a great job, all of you. And I do appreciate everything that's been done for our parks. It's everywhere you go, you can see it. And we do appreciate it. And we might be able to find a dollar or two. We might be able to talk to the staff. They might kick in a dollar out of their salary. What do you think, Jason?
I'm game.
Okay, you're game, huh? Yeah, we certainly want to thank you, Jason. You've done a super job. Kevin?
Elaine, you know, it's my... They look good to you, which they do to me as well. The lawns look wonderful. When you drive by, you get the fragrance of new moment grass. This is the guy who's in charge of that. We are grateful to have him.
I think our Parks Department has done a super job. Elaine, I don't know how many years you've been helping us and guiding us. And Kevin, it's so good to see you on. Thank you so much. And congratulations. Keep up the good work. We appreciate that. Okay, next we have announcements. Chamber of Commerce, Brady, I don't know, Ewan Leslie, and I see Ken back there. And I don't know how many more. But come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Town Council, as we know, Prescott Valley is growing incredibly rapidly. That's a great thing. We are or were, I should say were, in dire need of a location for people to hold events. And today, I would like to introduce you to the solution to that. I have Ken Foot and Leslie Jenkins with the Event Spot here today.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us here. We really appreciate it. We'd like to announce we've opened a new venue in the Prescott Valley area. We're about 4,000 square feet on a roof. The main room is about 3,000 square feet. And if you get a chance to go by, one of the coolest features, in my opinion, is to get into the entrance. You've got to cross a bridge over an actual river with koi in it. And so it, nice upscale, fun, relaxing mood to enter our venue, which is state-of-the-art. We can do live video teleconferencing anywhere in the world, interactive. And it's got a catering kitchen and easy access. We're, for the first time, utilizing the parkway out front there. Norm and I talked last week, and he said, he got a call from people saying, "What are all these cars doing in the parkway?" And Norm had to remind them that that was what it was intended for. And so it's finally being used. So we're really excited. We're trying to draw up events, not only from in the Prescott Valley area, but all over the state. And if we could bring those events into the PV area, then of course, the tax base enjoys the benefits of that because we're already partnering with the hotels and a lot of the restaurants so that they can actually take care of the people coming in for our venue. So we're looking at a domino effect that's going to help Prescott Valley. So we're excited to be here. Love any support you guys are able to offer. Anything we can do to help you, please let us know. And this is our very qualified Leslie Jenkins. She is the face of the Event Spot. And so she's the person who represents and does a great job for us.
Hi there. As Ken said, and thank you, Ken. So I have the fortune of being the general manager. So I'm excited to be working with many who are interested in coming into the community, looking for a venue to have a great place to hold an event, as well as working with them to give referrals and directing them to other aspects of Prescott Valley. So I'm very happy and excited to be working with Ken. And he is right, the river is his baby. So I highly suggest that you come by and take a look at our koi. They usually hide, but we'll probably be doing a naming contest because right now they're named Larry, Mo, and Curly. But we're open to the community helping us to get more invested in what we're doing and being able to name those. But it's a pleasure to be before you, and I look forward to working with many of you and those that are in the community.
Thank you.
Just while I'm up here with the microphone, being Prescott born and raised, but really Prescott Valley born and raised, there just wasn't a hospital yet. I've been coming to fireworks here in Prescott Valley my entire life. And I just want to extend a thank you on behalf of like, me and all of my peers in the community who have been doing fireworks here. Thanks for pulling that off, Parks and Rec, town of Prescott Valley. We really appreciate it.
Next, a very special one. Five-year certificate to Mary Lou Arnold. Jason, where are you? You're gonna come up and... Kathy is gonna come in. And harass. Hey, thank you for coming up.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight, Mayor and Council, to talk a little bit about Mary Lou Arnold. She's an amazing worker. I could never be happier with... She's fantastic. I just wanted to share this little story. When she was interviewed, we all had to be real calm because we didn't want her to see how excited we were about her interview. So we could all be cool until she left the room, and it was just, we were so excited. We knew it right immediately. And we've never regretted it. She is terrific. Her computer skills, her customer service skills, second to none. So we're very happy to have her.
Mary Lou. You know what? I'm so old, I won't be here to give you your 20-year pin, but I want you to do that. Oh, no. I have all the comments in the world that you're the one that can do it. The energy, the positive, bubbly, smiley energy is healthy, and it's just so nice to walk in there and feel that kind of energy. We're lucky in Town Hall because we have that in so many of our departments. But this one is just bubbly with our energy. And it's an asset. And Mary Lou, for all the events and all the times I bugged you and all the times you've helped me, always kindness, helpfulness, and please know that I noted it. And I did not take it for granted.
I didn't expect to be first, but I'm grateful for that. Thank you very much. You know, it's all of our employees and volunteers and staff, just everybody combined, working together is what makes this a successful town. And we all know how successful the town has become. And it's only because of people like you that we're able to say that and be that. And I want to thank you very much. Anyone else care to make any comment? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words. Mary Lou is kind of my lifeline, too, the Parks and Rec. I bug her all the time. And she has, you know, I think, a great attitude. She lives and breathes customer service, and we appreciate that. So congratulations.
Mary, comment?
I just want to thank you, Mary Lou. I've encountered you a few times going up there and bugging you guys on this, that, and the other. So thank you so much. You are just great and very helpful because most time when I show up, I'm a little bit confused on exactly where I'm going and what I'm doing. And you always straighten me out. So thank you.
Mike? I'm sorry, Jody?
Mary Lou, I want to offer congratulations. Thanks for all of these years already. You know, I would love to see more. But you know, the thing is, there's a cohesiveness when you have good employees. And I know Kathy understands that as well. And I just thank you for the service that you bring here. Not just for us as council, but for our citizens. Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, I mean, it's always, you know, usually when we have somebody, you know, getting their five-year pin, I said it's a good start. But you have a little bit of experience under your belt, so... But it's really nice hearing that, you know, someone else with the glowing remarks that they've made. And then for Laura Lee to gush the way she did, I mean, that doesn't happen often, does it?
I want something.
Anyway, it's nice to have someone such as yourself to deal with the public the way you have to in Parks and Rec. I mean, that's probably one of the busier offices that we have. So it's always nice having, we have such qualified and friendly personnel back there. So thank you for your time and, you know, your effort and your five-year pin. So that's great. Thank you.
Any comments in your defense?
Any comments in my defense? Well, I'll tell you what. Five years has flown by for me because it's such a great place to work. All my coworkers, it's so wonderful to be here. It starts with the leadership and then your coworkers. So I'm having a ball. Thank you.
Laura has a presentation.
It's great joy that I get to give you your five-year pin. And like I said, as the years add on, we get some gems added on. So thank you. I was sparkling. And they're usually emeralds. So stick around for emeralds.
I know they want your own for another 20 or 30 years. And Kathy, too. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Appreciate the good service.
Mr. Mayor.
Larry?
Yeah.
I think you should get him in there anyway, trying to hide.
Okay, Mary Lou, and are you getting many phone calls from people wanting to know about the fireworks?
I probably didn't.
And they're wanting to know where to go?
Where to go? Well, wanting to know, first of all, are we having them?
Yes.
And I am telling them, I am so... Oh, I'm sorry. I am so very happy to tell everybody that yes, we are for the 22nd year. We have a safe and sane fireworks zone.
Yes.
And we sent out a news blast today. It's on our Facebook page, so yes.
And are they from out of town? Because there was one individual that was sitting in the back row who was bragging about people from out of town. who was bragging about people from out of town calling and wanting to know where.
A lot of, other than 928 numbers, are calling in. So we've got people coming up from the valley for our fireworks this year. So everybody's really looking forward to it. So I'm excited to say, when they ask, "Are you having fireworks?", yes, we are. We are having this. We're having events. We've got an inflatable playground. We've got water slides. We have food vendors. We have a band. We've got it all. So everybody come to Prescott Valley for 4th of July this year.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for the good job. Kathy, how was it? Good to see you. Okay, next, we have a certificate of appreciation, Edmund Corrigan. Come on up. And Larry, you had some comments?
I do. And what I'd like to point out about Edmund is that he is a proud and distinguished graduate from the Citizens Academy, which is where I first met Edmund. And not only was he in the Citizens Academy, but he was a very active participant and also very supportive of the things that we were doing, and took something to heart. And that was when Heidi Foster gets up and does a presentation about Volunteer Central and opportunities available for people to volunteer within the town organization. Edmund took that to heart, went ahead and put in an application, and was on the Municipal Property Corporation Board. So for that, Edmund, thank you very much.
If I was allowed, I'd give you a jeweled pin. But we don't want to set that precedent, so I can't. So I think you know that we appreciate, respect, and need our volunteers. You really make the town what the town has become. It isn't us, it's all of you.
Any others? Mike?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we congratulate you, of course. And the whole purpose, I think, of going through the Citizens Academy is to lure people like you into our commissions and committees, because it does work very well. So we appreciate your commitment and participation, and congratulations. And we'll see, you know, if we can lure some more of those people in. So thank you.
Jody, you have a comment?
I would like to. Thank you so much for serving Edmund. It does, and that's something I care about, is when people step up to help. We all play a different role. And maybe they didn't tell you the part that you're also supposed to bring some more people with you to come and help, too. So thank you so much.
Any other? Marty?
Yeah, Edmund, thank you for stepping up and being part of the commission that you served on and the committees. And I know the Citizens Academy is a great opportunity and to bring quality people such as yourself to one of our boards or commissions. I think that exemplifies the purpose of everything. So thanks for stepping up and putting in your time. Thank you.
Rick?
Edmund, I want to thank you very much for your service to the town. And you should know that you're in great company tonight. We have several people that we're honoring tonight that have also stepped forward on commissions, and many of them continuing to do so. And you are in great company. So thank you very much for your service.
Rick, any... Edward, any comments in your defense?
No, I want to thank everybody. I enjoyed my time on the Citizens Property Commission, although it wasn't particularly long. But I'm moving to a different board, and I was told I couldn't serve on both of them. So that's why I resigned from the Citizens Property Commission.
Edmund is moving on up to where he will be busier volunteering.
I believe the Board of Adjustment meets a little more often than the Citizens Property Commission does.
We sure appreciate that. And of course, the Citizens Academy, part of it is to bring people to the government. The other part is to bring government to the people. And you show what happens when we do that. Thank you so much.
It works. It's a very good program, and it does get people interested in getting involved in the government. And besides, I got to find out about Larry going to the University of Michigan. Our old rivals.
We won't bring that one up, okay? Come on up and pose for a picture. Next, our comments and communications. And Neil would like to take a few seconds. Where's Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mayor Council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to your new Water Utilities Manager. This is Operations Manager. This is Scott Keith. He's been with us since June 11th. And I'm going to turn it over to him and just let him tell you a few things about himself. And if you have any questions, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer those, so.
All right. First of all, I'm very thankful to be part of the Prescott Valley team. Just been wrapping up about my third week here, and love it. It's been great. I come originally from Phoenix, Arizona. Been in the water utility industry for about 25 years. And started reading meters as a 10-year-old off the tailgate of a pickup truck. So just really thankful to be part of the team and looking forward to a career with the Town of Prescott Valley.
Well, welcome. Appreciate your service. And I think you'll enjoy it. We have an outstanding staff and outstanding community. So thank you so much. Anything else, Neil?
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments from the council, anyone?
Jody and I... Go ahead, Jody.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, we've got our fabulous library staff. They're just rocking it. With our 40th anniversary, one of the multiple events that we have going on is Fandomania. It's a Comic-Con event. And if you've not been to an event like this, you definitely want to see and be seen. That's on Saturday, July 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There is a host of things that are happening. And I know they have their own website created just for this. It is one of these events. There will be probably a couple thousand people that will come to it. And so I would just want to let people know that we do need some volunteers. And if you can volunteer for that day, for even part of the day, you can call Shelby at 928-759-3038. This is Mayor... I'm just excited, because this is like our first one. And I know we're going to have more afterwards. And it brings money to town, and I'm happy with that.
Good. Laura?
Well, you remember, I've been telling you that we're looking for a bride and a groom to be part of the history of our 40th anniversary. I had told you before, we had a judge. And I told you, we had a stage. And I told you, we had all kinds of things. Well, Donna from Prescott Valley Flores called. She's so excited about our tie the knot and to renew your vows. She's going to produce boutonnieres, a little bouquet. And she thinks you need a decorated arch to stand under. So we want to thank Donna from Prescott Valley Flores. We've got to have people to come forward to tie the knot. We've got to have people come forward to renew their vows. So I need you to get the word out there for us. We're going to have a lot of fun. This will happen on Sunday, August 26th. And I want whoever that is, I'm going to repeat this, because I think it's so important. You will become part of the town history.
Rick, did you have a comment?
No.
Marty, Mary?
No.
I'm already married, Marty.
No comment, Mary?
I don't think I can get Kirk to do it again. I mean, you know, it was kind of hard getting him up on that ID program as it was. So I don't know. I don't know. I could try, but I doubt it.
Okay. Jody, again, thank you for all your efforts. I think we're going to have a great 40th anniversary. It's in progress, by the way, and doing a good job. Any other comments, anyone? If not, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Tonight, it's Marty Grossman is going to read the Consent Agenda.
I had a feeling. The Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and would be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. A, approving the June 7th work-study minutes, June 14th, 2018 council minutes. Next is approving department reports, accounts payable, monthly financial report, council investment report. G is approving reversionary plat, RP 18-005 Dairy Queen. H is authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2060, approving the annual authorization to purchase supplies and services from council members. I is approving the budget transfers from capital and operating funds totaling $7,848 for the purchase of a Parks and Rec vehicle. J is approving the Town of Prescott Valley Police Department reimbursement request from the Phoenix Police Department Task Force for Training and Equipment in the total amount of $10,029 from the Phoenix Police Department Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAC Task Force. K is approving the acceptance of an Arizona Community Foundation Law Enforcement K-9 Grant, Number 19031, requiring no matching funds. L is approving the renewed agreement for paralegal services with Carol Cornell. M is approving the agreement with the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management to participate in staff education and planting of trees in various Prescott Valley park locations. N is approving the agreement with the Arizona Game and Fish to participate in the community fishing program. Now, we had two items that were removed recently, so I didn't read those, and we'll leave them out.
Okay. I have to recuse myself from the... From this item. Will... Anybody want to pull on them or separate discussion? Or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as a whole.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
With that, we have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote? Not working?
Yes.
Does it work?
No. Mayor Harvey Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
He recused.
He recused himself from here.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
Passes.
That passes the majority. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to Number 10. Second reading of Ordinance Number 844, adopting amendments to Chapter 6, Animals. And with that, I would instruct Town Clerk to read Ordinance Number 844 by title only for a second reading. Fatima, you're up.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled, Amendments to Chapter 6, Animals, declared by Resolution Number 2056 to be a public record, which amends Chapter 6, Animals of the Town Code, to, among other things, amend sections 6-02-010, definitions 6-01-050, dog license, 6-01-060, vaccination of dogs, 6-01-100, animal control fees, and section 6-05-010, violations and penalties. Classifying certain first-time offenses as civil violations, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not herein repealed, reenacted, or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you. We've been through this thing a lot, but is there any discussion? If none, then I would ask, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote or call the vote?
Mayor Harvey Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we go on to Number 10B. Second reading of Ordinance Number 845, approving zoning map change, ZMC 18001, TDAH Investments. Any discussion on that? First of all, I'll ask the Town Clerk to read Ordinance Number 845 by title only. Fatima?
An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 18-001, by changing the zoning classification of Lot 6550, Unit 16, from R2-3 residential, multiple dueling units, to P1 parking, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Good, thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, then I would ask you to read... For whether to set the vote, shall the ordinance pass?
Mayor Harvey Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Fatima? We go on to Number C. Second reading of Ordinance Number 846, zoning map change, ZMC 1802, National. And this, again, we've discussed that a lot. But first of all, I'd ask you to read Ordinance Number 846 by title only, if you would.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 18-002, by changing the zoning classification of Prescott Valley Unit 2, Lot 402, from C1, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services, to RS, Residential and Services, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Good, thank you. This, again, we've discussed, but is there any further discussion you'd like? If not, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote, call the vote?
Mayor Harvey Skook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more, Number 10D. And the same thing, we've studied this through several previous meetings. Second reading of Ordinance Number 847, approving zoning map change, ZMC 18-003, Stone Ridge, HOA. And again, would you read the Ordinance Number 847 by title only?
An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 18-003, to change the zoning classification of approximately 2 1/2 acres located at 1300 North Stone Ridge Drive from R1L-PAD, Residential Single Family, Limited Plan Area Development, and C1-PAD, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services, Plan Area Development, to RS-PAD, Residential and Services, Plan Area Development, zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you. Any discussion? If not, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote?
Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now, we move on to new business for review, comment, and/or possible action. A, 11A, Consideration of Reappointing Brett Poliakon -- do I pronounce that right? To the Parks and Recreation Commission. Laura, I'm sorry. Oh, Rick is going -- okay, Rick, you want to comment?
I certainly do, Mayor. On June 30th, 2018, Brett Poliakon's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Brett Poliakon was first appointed to a partial term on this board on May 26th, 2016, and this reappointment will be his second consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye, councilmembers Marty Grossman, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Brett Poliakon for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
Rick here? Rick here?
Brett.
Brett, I'm sorry. No?
I don't see him.
Okay, are there any questions, comments, motions, demotions, commotions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the appointment.
I'll second that.
With the renewal date of June 30th, 2021. Sorry, I hit that one in.
I'll second that.
With the motion in a second, would you set the vote, call the vote?
Mayor Harvey Skug?
I approve.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have a very difficult one now, Consideration of Appointing Edmund Corrigan to Board of Adjustments. Rick? Where's Edmund? He was here a bit ago. Oh, there he is. Good. Rick?
Okay. It looks like I have to do that one. One physician on the Board of Adjustment came open when Gary Kyle resigned effective at the end of the term, January 31st, 2018. Mr. Kyle was first appointed to the Board of Adjustment on August 9th, 2012, to fill an existing term, and then reappointed to one more consecutive term with a renewal date of January 31st. The vacancy was advertised, and two applicants were received. Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye and Councilmen Anderson and Grossman conducted the interview and are recommending the appointment of Edmund Corrigan to fill the vacancy made by Gary Kyle's departure with a term renewal date of January 31st, 2021.
Edmund, any comments? Would you like to say anything? You have to use a microphone. Okay. Any questions, comments, motions, demotions, commotions, promotions? Jody?
I would make a motion to appoint Edmund Corrigan to the Board of Adjustment to a term with a renewal date of January 31st, 2021.
Second, anyone?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, the motion in a second. Would you set the vote now? This is where the challenge comes. Vote.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Congratulations. We sure appreciate your service. Okay, we move on then to number C. Rick, okay. Consideration of Reappointing Frankie Gibson to the Arts and Culture Commission. She isn't here. Rick?
Yes. On June 30th, 2018, Frankie Gibson's term on the Arts and Culture Commission will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Frankie Gibson was first appointed to a partial term on this board on January 13th, 2011, and this reappointment will be her fourth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye and Councilmember Marty Grossman and myself are recommending the reappointment of Frankie Gibson for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to reappoint Frankie Gibson to the Arts and Culture Commission to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021 by voice vote.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Good, we have a motion in a second. Would you do the vote?
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we move on then to D, Consideration of Reappointing Kevin Trevini to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Rick?
Okay. On June 30th, 2018, Kevin Trevini's term on the Parks and Recreation Commission will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Kevin Trevini was first appointed to a partial term on this board on December 4th, 2014, and this reappointment will be his third consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye, Marty Grossman, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Kevin Trevini for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
Any comments, motions, demotions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Reappointing Kevin Trevini to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Kevin, do you want to introduce yourself? Come on up. I think everybody knows you. By the way, we've been very fortunate, because the commission's people, we just have an absolutely great commission services.
Well, Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to be in here and for submitting my application again. It's been, again, an honor and a privilege to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission. And I also attended the Citizens Academy. And just for me to learn more about the town and to participate any way I can is -- I mean, that's what I like to do. So I'm just grateful to be here tonight to be able to continue my service to the town on the Parks and Rec Commission until such time as I decide to do something else, possibly run for council again in a couple of years. So thank you.
You're a great guy, Kevin. We appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Did we have a second motion?
Yeah.
You want to call the vote?
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
But Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Kevin, congratulations, and thank you again. Okay, we move on then to E, Consideration of Reappointing Lucila Mangels to Library Board of Trustees. Rick, or?
Yes, I'll do it. On June 30th, 2018, Lucila Mangels' term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. She was first appointed to a partial term on this board on January 10th, 2013, and this reappointment will be her third consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye, Councilmember Marty Grossman, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Lucila Mangels for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
Good. Questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion. Motion to reappoint Lucila Mangels to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
I'll second, Mayor.
Motion in a second. Lucila, here is she.
Sir.
Do the vote.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, another very special one. Consideration of Reappointing Renee Ramsey to the Library Board of Trustees. Rick?
Yes. On June 30th, 2018, Renee Ramsey's term on the Library Board of Trustees will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Renee Ramsey was first appointed to a partial term on this board on January 25th, 2018, and this reappointment will be her second consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye, Councilmembers Marty Grossman, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Renee Ramsey for a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021.
Renee, you have anything to say in your defense? Come on up. I don't know if Larry is going to be your spokesperson or not. Eric, come on up. Can I pull that down just a little bit?
Mayor Skug and members of the council, I'm delighted to once again serve on the library board. I did so a few years ago. And as an English professor devoted to the culture of books and learning, the mission of our library is very dear to my heart, and I am delighted to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
We're so lucky to have you. Larry, what's your comment?
Actually, I replaced Renee when I first came on. So we've got a little history going here on the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I look forward to Renee being on the board. She really is a very sharp person, well-educated, and I know she's going to ask us some questions that's going to be challenging. So I welcome her on the board.
Well, because of that, I think I better make a motion. Motion to reappoint Renee Ramsey to the Library Board of Trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2021 by voice vote.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Now, this is the real test, Renee. Would you call the vote?
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. I think, as you've seen, the people we're getting on our commissions are super, and we rely very heavily on them to help us make our decisions. We move on then to -- thank you so much. Move on then to number G. Is a Proposed Expenditure Limitation and Budget for the Fiscal Year 2018 and 19. Mr. Colpe, you are up. Any suggestions? There's a public hearing, so I declare it open.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members. At this point, I definitely don't want to make any suggestions through this long tedious process that we've gone through.
I hope not.
So there's only a couple of things left to do, and then we'll have the budget done for another fiscal year.
You've done a good job, Bill.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I have a good staff that does, you know, I hate to say most of the work, but I got to give them credit where credit's due. So just a couple of comments before I turn it over to the public for comments or questions. On May 24th, basically a month ago, council set the tentative budget for the upcoming fiscal year for the amount, and hopefully I get it right this time. Immediately after the public hearing, you're going to have an action item. Either you can approve the tentative budget as what was approved last month, or based on comments, you can lower the budget. We're not recommending that. Staff's not recommending that anyway. Larry, I don't believe is recommending that. So we hope that the budget will be approved as is. At your direction, I can give you a very brief PowerPoint presentation, or as Larry refers to it, as the dreaded PowerPoint presentation, or I can just answer questions that the council or public might have regarding the budget. So with that, I'll wait for your direction, Mayor.
Anyone from the public have any comments? Any comments?
We've reviewed, we've cussed, and we've discussed. So I think -- I'm sad there's no public here, but I too want to thank you for all the hard work and all the staff. It's interesting, we're one of the earliest communities to get to this point, and I always feel glad about that.
Good. Laura, we've discussed, and Laura cussed. Any other comments?
I just hope I wasn't part of that cussing part of our budget.
You were part of the responsibility. No one from the public? If there's any other comments?
Nope.
I think you've done a super job.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, then I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and we move on to number H. Consideration of Approving Resolution Number 2057, Adopting the Fiscal Year 2018, 2019 Fiscal Expenditure Limitation and Budget for the Town of Prescott Valley. That's going to end the discussion and question. Any other comments or motions or demotions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion if we're ready to authorize the mayor in his absence the vice mayor to sign Resolution 2057, adopting the fiscal year 2018, 19 final expenditure limitation and budget for the Town of Prescott Valley.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Would you set the vote?
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Skug?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. That means the budget has passed discussion and the cussing is done. Okay, move on to number I, Public Hearing, Zoning Map Change, ZMC 18004, St. Germain Catholic Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The illustration above you defines the boundaries of the church and the rectory. Proposed is the utilization of a series of residential lots and adjoining unit of Prescott Valley for the purpose of parking, as well as expansion of the church facility into the future. Because of the complicated aspect of combining meets and bounds properties with residential properties, we thought it would be suitable to bring a planned area development use district, overlay that over the properties that are going to be used for the church purposes, including parking, assign them various use categories such as P1 for parking, and bring that forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a preliminary development plan. We did so. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the matter, took public comment, and approved the preliminary development plan. Tonight's action by the Town Council is to consider, after a public hearing, rezoning these properties to the suitable categories that will enable expansion of the Catholic parish. We've received no opposition to this request. There was an extensive public outreach as a result of our requirements, and to date we've received no opposition. After the public hearing is closed, Mayor, after taking public comment, the next item is to actually approve the zoning map change actions, and I would assist in responding to questions from you, Mayor, council, or members of the public.
Council, any questions? Public, any comments? No questions, no comments? If there is none, then I would declare the public hearing closed. We move on to J. Consideration of Reading Ordinance Number 848 by Title Only on Two Separate Occasions, then place the same on Final Passage, Approving ZMC 18004, St. Germain Catholic Parish. Anybody got a motion? Anybody got a motion?
I'll make a motion to read ordinance number 848 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion in a second, would you count the vote?
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to instruct you to read the ordinance number 848 by title only for the first reading.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona amending the town zoning map, ZMC 18-004, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately seven acres from R1L-10 Residential Single Family Limited to RS-PAD Residential and Services Planned Area Development, R1L-10 Residential Single Family Limited to P1-PAD Parking Plan Area Development, and R1MH-10 Residential Single Family Mobile Manufacturer Homes to P1-PAD Parking Plan Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you. Any other comments? No?
No, it's just I feel sorry for Fatima today. She's going to probably need a throat ludge by the time we're done.
By the way, this is the first full meeting she's done for us.
I think she's doing a fantastic job.
We wanted it to be a tough one.
Agreed, agreed.
We wanted it to be a tough one. We move on to K. Another public hearing. Zoning ordinance amendment regarding the vacation rental business licensing requirements. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing to take comments regarding amending the town code to eliminate a provision that requires that short-term rental properties obtain a business license prior to conducting business. Often, we get good advice from our town attorney and his fine staff. Thank you for approving Carol Cornell's contract, and she brought focus to this issue early on, having received clarification from the state attorney general regarding this issue and the informing of the city of Sedona that if they continued to conduct the practice of requiring short-term rentals to receive business licenses, that they would have their state shared revenues withheld. So Carol and Ivan, or Johnny on the spot, brought this amendment forward. This has gone forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the unanimously recommended approval. At the conclusion of your public hearing portion, if there are questions, I would assist in responding. Your next item would be to formally consider reading the ordinance, and I would respond to questions at that time as well.
Questions? Anyone? Anyone have any comments?
Richard?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do we have issues that have arisen beyond Carol calling this to our attention?
Actually, there's a piece of legislation that suggests that this action is prudent, and it was then further clarified both by our legal counsel when the city of Sedona received concern expressed from the attorney general that if they continued to do what we do, that they would lose potentially state shared revenue. So this is a proactive approach to legislation that was passed.
Thank you. That was the point I wanted everybody to understand.
And that's being studied very heavily, not just by Prescott Valley, but by other communities. Any other questions, comments, public comments? If not, I'll declare the -- wait a minute.
Public hearing, yeah, you're right.
Declare the public hearing closed. We move on to number J, L rather. Consideration of reading number, ordinance number 849, amending number 1306-020 of the town code by title for two separate occasions, then placing the same on the final passage, vacation rentals, business licensing requirements. Now, you notice this is called a business licensing, not a long-term rental. Anyone have any motions or anything on that?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's just a reading of the ordinance.
No, it should be a motion to read the ordinance.
Should be a motion, yeah.
Motion to read it.
We can do it. Mr. Mayor, council? Yes, we do need to have a motion as to how to read the ordinance.
All right.
We have the motion.
Motion to read ordinance number 849, amending 1306-020 on the town code by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion in a second. Fatima?
Vice Mayor Harvey Scoog?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mayor Harvey Scoog, my apologies. Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
With that, thank you. With that, I would instruct you to read the ordinance number 849 by title only for the first reading.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending section 13-06-020 used regulations in Article 13-06 R1L Residential Single Family Limited in Chapter 13 zoning to clarify regulations associated with short-term residential uses, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision of this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you. Okay, move on to M. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2054, adopting finance policy 4-11 PSPRS pension policy. Bill, you are up.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. The item before you tonight for your consideration is approving the public safety pension funding policy. This item was discussed back on May, or June 7th, sorry, at a work study, and I was going to kind of just briefly touch over the highlights of that discussion. We do believe that our policy complies with House Bill 2097. Earlier this week, we did get some, I think it was from the league, that had templates, had a draft of what some of the policies should look like. So we'll look at that and see if any changes need to be made. We don't believe any changes need to be made, but we'll go ahead and look and see if anything has to happen. The other component of this policy is that we have identified three funding sources to try to pay down our unfunded liability, and we hope by using these three revenue streams that we'll pay off our funding, our unfunded liability within the next 10 to 12 years. So hopefully by 2030, this unfunded liability will go away. One of the first things we're going to do is that instead of paying our, basically our retirement contribution biweekly, we're going to pay the entire amount that's budgeted. So the budget that was just approved, public safety pension portion is about $1.4 million. That's just the town share. So we're going to be paying that kind of money. If you approve this policy, probably within the next two weeks, two to three weeks, we'll make that payment. Now, what that does is then the state will actually have the money invested. They're able to invest in instruments that gain more interest than what we can gain. So we hope that's going to make a lot more money, and that additional money then will be applied against our unfunded liability. The next one is that the amount of money that's, that we collect or that we anticipate to collect above the $3 million from the half a cent increase in our TPT, we're going to take either part or all of that on an annual basis, and then we're going to budget for that, and then we're also going to make that payment at the beginning of the year, of new fiscal year. So this year, we budgeted $900,000. So come the middle of January, you're going to see a couple of very large payments going out to the pension fund with the idea that this is going to draw down our unfunded liability. Now, the third one, which is new, is that we're going to take any remaining budget balance in a police department's budget, primarily salaries is where most of the money will be, and then also any money in the operating budget. So at the end of every fiscal year, we're going to take that balance, then we're also going to make that payment directly to the retirement system. So we're hoping, again, with these three items, we will go ahead and draw that or bring that unfunded liability down. And the only other change is that on an annual basis, we've got to recognize, and we're going to probably do that through our budget resolution, what our unfunded liability will be. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions? Anyone? Mary?
I just have a comment. I just am really thankful that we're being so proactive on this. You know, it means a lot to the debt that we have, and it means a lot to our first responders moving forward to their retirement, and that we pray that the investments that go forward will be solid and very enriching to bring those funds to a much better status.
I agree, and that's what we intend. Right now, their interest rates are probably about two and a half times higher than what we're getting right now, so we think it's to our benefit by giving them the money upfront.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions? Larry?
Just a comment. I'd like to compliment Bill and his staff on going ahead and working on this particular item, and then when comparing what you're being asked to do this evening with the template that was sent out by the League of Cities and Towns, we're spot on, spot on, doing it right. And the very nice thing is that we're not looking at any sort of upset in our revenue stream and expenditures. We're doing it over a period of time, a reasonable period of time, and making this challenge and commitment, quite frankly, that we're honoring the commitment and making this unfunded balance go away. So it's all good.
Laura?
In addition to all those comments, I'm very grateful to my fellow councilmembers that we're dealing with this and that we're not passing it down the line to future councils. I think it's really important that we have a heads up, and that's what we've done, and I just want you to know I'm proud to serve with all of you. With that, if there's no other questions, I'd be glad to make a motion.
Are there any other questions? No? I think we're ready.
Motion to authorize the mayor in his absence the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 2054, adopting the finance policy 411 PSRPS, pension funding policy by voice vote.
Second, anyone?
Oh, Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, the motion in a second. Bill, this is a moving target, so keep your eye out.
All right, thank you.
Fatima?
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Scoog?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Linai?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, and I agree with Laura Lee. I think we're on target with this, but it's one of the least stable things we could ever have to contend with. Okay, we move on to number N. Consideration of approving the annual amendment to the agreement with CH2HILOMI for Operations, Maintenance, and Management Services, fiscal year 1819. Neil, and I notice you have a couple of dignified gentlemen here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Are they here to watch you, or are they here to help you?
Well, I guess that all depends on what you would like for them to do.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council. So as you're aware, this is the annual amendment to the CH2OMI contract. I do have a presentation for you. There's a lot of information in the RFCA, so I have a brief presentation that summarizes that down fairly well. And you'll notice on my presentation that I wrote this as a Jacobs contract amendment rather than writing CH2OMI. Actually, the contract is still CH2HILOMI. I just wrote Jacobs on here to get everybody to start getting used to seeing that name instead, even though the contract and the RFCA still say CH2HILOMI. That's just, that's the reason I did that. But like I said, there's a lot of information in the RFCA, and so as a quick summary, you're all aware that we have a five-year contract with CH2M, and it expires in June of 2020. We do negotiate with them annually for any changes of scope that we want to add to the contract and also for compensation. And they have been providing services to the town since 1993, when we first started the wastewater treatment plant and wastewater collection system. So this year, we are proposing to increase the sewer cleaning mileage from 75 to 80 miles. That puts us on roughly a three and a half to four-year rotation through our system. So once every four years, we will have completed full cleaning of the system. We also are asking them to replace the remaining manual radio, manual read meters with radio read, and we're looking at about 2,000 of those, and then performing a condition assessment on our waste, on our clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant. Now, normally, when we approve the contract, a lot of times, a couple of months into the year, we'll come back to you and say, we've got an out of scope services agreement we'd like to sign and have them do some additional work for us. But we actually identified some of those projects ahead of time this year, and so we've included special projects within this contract that would take the place of some of the out of scope items that we might do later on. So we've actually included them here in the contract, so there is additional compensation associated with these line items, being a clarifier rehabilitation project, which is based on their assessment, a lift station aeration project, and a flow meter replacement project for the effluent flow meter at the treatment plant. So getting into the compensation, the base fees are essentially what we pay them for their personnel, the labor hours, and pay for such things as, you know, the fuel costs for the vehicles and things like that. So that's what the base fees cover. And you can see here that we are proposing an increase in the wastewater fee of $44,000. We are showing no increase in the other three areas, the water, reclaimed water, and the recharge. And so that would bring their base fee total to $3,748,616, which is a 1.2% increase over the current contract. In addition to that, for the special projects, we have a budgeted amount of $144,000 and change for the clarifier rehabilitation. We don't know the full scope of that item yet. If it proves to be less than that amount, this is a not to exceed number, we would pay them less. If it looks like it's going to go over that amount by a significant margin, there are some things where we would get done this year, such as the mechanical stuff related to bearings and things like that that would be hard to do, so we would drain the tanks, we would do those mechanical things, and there may be something more minor like a recoding or something that could be done where we could schedule that for next year as opposed to this year. But we would get the critical items taken care of with this budget. Lift station aeration project, we are looking to add some aeration to the viewpoint lift station, and what the aeration does, it's an odor control mechanism. Right now, we are adding a chemical called magnesium hydroxide, and we are spending between $20,000 and $40,000 a year on that chemical, and that chemical also causes additional maintenance requirements. A lot of times, the pumps get plugged up, and then you're doing the handling of the chemical by the employee, so we would be looking to... chemical by the employee, so we would be looking to reduce cost, maintenance, and even improve safety. And so that would be sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. If that proves effective, we would look at doing an additional lift station maybe next year with that. Also, we are looking to replace the effluent flow meter to match what we did with the influent flow meter last year, replace the twenty-five-year-old meter with a new technology, brand-new meter, at a cost of sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. Those two items are exactly what we're going to be paying, so they've already given us the numbers for that, and we've agreed that that's what we're going to pay them to do that work. So that would be purchasing the equipment and doing the installation. Finally, this year's a little bit different, but on the, on our water meter replacement program, we're trying to make one final push to get this all done once and for all. And so with those two thousand meters, we are proposing to actually pay them a little bit more, we're looking to give them twenty-five, or twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, basically to cover the cost of their labor and get that, get that complete, so that all of the meters that we have in the system for the five-eighths-inch residential will be radio reed of one form or another. The only thing remaining on that project, we do have somewhere between a hundred and fifty or two hundred commercial meters, which are larger than the standard five-eighths size, so replacement of those meters is a bit more expensive and a little bit more time-consuming. Like I said, there's only about two hundred of those left, and we would do those potentially next year, but all the other meters in the system would be radio reed of one form or another, the majority being what we call the flex net that transmit and communicate with the top of Glassford Hill, so there is no work required by the guys to go out and actually look at meters at that point. Within the contract, there are also reimbursable items, essentially their pass-throughs, their expenses that OMI incurs on our behalf, and then we turn around and reimburse them for those. Repairs is one of those items, so anytime a motor goes out, they go out and buy another motor, we pay the cost of that, they just pass that on to us. When they're doing those repairs, we are not paying additional for their labor, that's all included under their base fees, but because we don't know, you know, what that equipment's all going to be, we pay for, you know, the replacement equipment and that sort of thing. Biosolids is disposal of the solids that are produced at the plant every day, so that includes the trucking costs and the disposal fees at Gray Wolf landfill. The magnesium hydroxide, I touched on that briefly already, that's the chemical that we use for odor control at the lift stations, and we're trying to get rid of that one out of the budget, but we've still got ten thousand dollars this year for that. And then water meters, when we buy water meters, they're buying them, and then we're reimbursing them that cost. And then electricity is paid directly by the town, so those bills come directly to us and are not a reimbursable or a pass-through in the contract. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I know that that still leaves a lot of detail that I didn't cover, but I knew that you had a chance to look at your memos, and I just thought this might help to put it in perspective, so if you have any questions, either of me or any of the people from CH-two-M-Hill-OMI Jacobs, Chris Maines, the manager, is here, and I know he's brought a couple of people with him, you know, Juan Montcha is here, Mayor, so, and Danny Zamora, their maintenance manager.
Bring them up and introduce them, why don't you?
All right. Yeah, he was talking to all of you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're in our twenty-sixth year, and every year, we run into new challenges, and it's a bumpy road sometimes, but we persevere, and how we do that is by getting the right leadership and a team involved, and I pay a special thank you to this partnership that we continue to help each other out, and we continue to serve you guys, and I have a couple employees here that, and I want to pay a special thank you to our staff, that we have twenty-three other members that grind it out every day, out in the heat, the cold, working with the clients, the customers, citizens, and to make this a successful partnership, so. I'd like to introduce a couple of gentlemen here, I think one of us, there is no introduction, he's a legend, he's been here since day one, I can introduce himself, and then the other gentleman is, it's a new position we added to our, to our team, that we normally would not have had, so, and what this position helps do is hopefully cut back on some of the repair pass-throughs by performing more maintenance, rather than hiring out, hiring out maintenance. So I'll let them introduce themselves.
Juan, it's good to see you again, and we've seen you for years, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, I guess no need to really introduce myself, it's good to see you all again.
Oh, go ahead. Some new people.
Juan Montcha, Assistant Project Manager, been doing this a long time, and it's been great working for you, thank you.
Good, thank you. Next.
Hello, everybody, I'm Danny Zamora, I'm the new maintenance manager. I've been probably in the business for over twenty years, working in maintenance, in the military, I did maintenance, and so my background is maintenance, so we're coming, I've got a team of three now, so we're going through all the equipment, doing all the preventative maintenance, oil changes, greasing, everything that needs to be put forth to make the equipment run longer, last longer, and save you guys money.
All right. Appreciate that.
No problem, thank you.
Oh, magic words, he used magic words.
Any questions or comments, anyone?
I would like to make the comment, number one, I just want to thank you for sitting through all of that, but I do think there's a purpose, I think you, especially those that don't know us, you've got a flavor of us, you know how much we value our employees, and we extend that to you, is the point I want to make. I remember during the recession, when you worked with us, and there were no increases, and I know that that meant a great deal to me, because at that time, I was one of many who was really concerned about how we were going to maintain the quality, and you were our full partner, and you helped make that possible, and I haven't forgotten that.
Thank you. Mary?
Well, as Vice Mayor Nye said, that's something that sticks with me very much, is through those rough years, and they were, they were definitely rough, and we worked as a team for the betterment of the community that we serve, and I remember that, and that loyalty and that partnership, so I thank you for that. I know all of you live here as well as we do, and your heart and soul is in the community, so thank you.
Rick?
Well, of course, you've always been a great partner, and we're thankful for that. We're successful as a town for many reasons, one of them is the partnerships that we have, and we cherish those partnerships, so we welcome you, you're going to find yourself at home here in Prescott Valley, I think. So welcome to town, and we look forward to working with you for a long time, so, and of course, for the company itself, we do enjoy having you here, and we feel you're part of the town, you're right, so, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just, I have the same perspective, I think we go through this every year, and I think the partnership, you couldn't ask for more in terms of a model, how to do it right. And I don't think there is any distinction between town employees and you guys, I think it's one team, and I think the community perceives it that way as well, so you couldn't ask for a better approach, and I think it works well. So we're looking forward to, you know, continued relationship, it's beneficial, and I like the proactive maintenance perspective, you know, where we can cut costs here and there, so, you know, and I think we've always been in this department looking forward, so I think we're trying to, you know, alleviate any unforeseen circumstances by being proactive, and it's worked out very well, so I like Neil's perspective in terms of getting that done, so. I do have one question, Neil, and I've always had an interest in the upgrade of the water meters, and we have two thousand left, and it sounds like there's actually, you do replace the old meters with a new meter that will accommodate the, you know, and I'm trying to think of the radio frequency type thing.
Yes.
And I'm perceiving that right, or understanding that right?
That is correct, we do replace the entire meter, and the other benefit to that is that, you know, oftentimes, after fifteen, twenty years, meters are not accurate any longer, and so by putting a new meter in the ground, number one, we're reducing our manpower on the reading side, but we're then also capturing the revenues that we were fully entitled to, and so, you know, there may be slight increases because the old meters are reading less than they should have been.
Right, you know, I like the win-win situation, and the fact that, you know, and it's inevitable that we have these kinds of upgrades relative to depending on manual labor to do that, and it's much more efficient and effective, lowers costs, so we definitely appreciate that, so thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, it's always great having a partnership with an organization that is as efficient as yours, and it's always nice to see the changes being made and the reasons for them, and it's always a very positive change, and it's a win-win situation for both the town and your organization, and I'm really happy that you changed the name to Jacobs.
Well, our citizens certainly appreciate good services, I can tell you, if there was backup in our wastewater, we'd be getting a lot of phone calls, that's for sure. So it is appreciated, these partnerships, it helps keep the town running well. I do have just a couple of quick questions, if I understood correctly, Neil, in our scope services change this year, we had basically three new items that were proposed, correct?
Yes.
And then we had three special projects that is bringing in that increase, is that one-point-two percent, is that correct?
The three special projects are not included in the one-point-two percent increase, it's the changes in scope and just general inflation that, you know, governs the one-point-two, but the special projects have their own compensation that was outlined in that table.
Very good, thank you so much, appreciate you being here, you're welcome.
I think we've really been good to our constituents, thanks to your help, we appreciate that. It was a nice feeling when we discussed water rates a few weeks ago, and we do not have to raise our rates this year. Thank you for your help on that. Anything else, Neil?
I think that's it.
You've done a great job, Neil, keep it up.
Thank you.
Anybody care to make a motion, or any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the annual amendment to the agreement with CH-two-H-Hill-OMI for Operations Maintenance and Management Services for fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen, well, fiscal year eighteen-nineteen.
And I'll be glad to second.
A motion and a second, would you call the vote?
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey Scoob?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Neil. Okay, we move on to number twelve, comments from the public, Mike Whiting will read that.
Comments from the public, consideration discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public, those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance, any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof, such remarks shall be limited to five minutes, unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter, or ask the matter to be placed on a future agenda.
Anyone from the public care to comment? If there is no comments on that, then we move on to number twelve, which will actually be the last item on the agenda, anyone care to make a motion regarding adjournment?
Mayor, I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay.
To adjourn.
Motion adjourned, is anybody glad to make a second?
I'll second the motion.
You were glad to make a second, I'll, you want to call the vote?
Mayor Harvey Scoob?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mike Whiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.